We call this February 5th meeting to order. Yesterday was a great day in Bristol, and Bristol, and Philadelphia, and the entire country. I think we should do the fight song.
(audience cheering) Fly Eagles fly on the road to victory. Fly Eagles fly, score a touchdown, one, two, three. Hit 'em low, hit 'em high, and watch our Eagles fly. Fly Eagles fly on the road to victory. E- A- G, now E- A- G, Eagles![52.14][52.14](audience cheering)
It was a great game.
I wonder how Belichick and Brady feel today.[63.57][63.57](audience laughing) They missed Disney World this year.[68.00][68.00](audience laughing) On another note, I just would like to stand for a moment of silence. And let's remember Councilman Devine's father-in-law, Frank Cruz, who passed away yesterday. The guy was a remarkable man. I knew the guy my whole life, did a lot of work for us, and my dad, growing up, and he was a first-class guy.
Yes, he was.
So let's have a moment of silence for Frank. Okay. Just for the record, Councilwoman Cullen, I wish she was here. She would have did her, brought her pom-pom to the chair. She is out with eye surgery. Councilman Devine's not here because of his father-in-law. And Councilman Pez is home. I think his son or somebody's sick at home, so that's why that side is empty. We're in executive session discussing some rural state that we're going to be discussing later on this evening. So I know we have people here who want to start first. We have a new officer chief. You want to introduce your new officer?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Stephen Markle. Stephen Contra.
(inaudible). Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Steve is an ACT 120 certified officer. He works in Salisbury. He's going to learn a little about street work now, after being up in God's company for a little bit.
Dealing with.
He's from Ben Salem.
Came through us from Ben Salem. He is part of their interim program. Steve, why don't you go over to the mic real quick, just give the guys a little background on where you're from, your family.
Yes. Well, it's a pleasure to be here, everyone. You know, it's honored to be a part of Bristol Borough. As Chief Henry told you, I'm from Ben Salem, right over there. Twenty-six years old. I've been living in Ben Salem my entire life. I, you know, have enjoyed it there. I've always enjoyed the, being a part of the lower end. I also work in Salisbury Township, which is, it's quiet, so I am looking forward to getting into the nitty-gritty down here in Bristol Borough, and I look forward to it. I feel like I'm in very good hands here. Everyone who has introduced me to the police department here has been great. They welcomed me with open arms, and it seems like they're eager to take me under their wing and teach me their ways and try and make me the best cop I can possibly be. So again, it's an honor to be here, and thank you again, everyone, for hopefully accepting me, and I hope to do a great job here in the borough.
Thank you.
Thank you.[256.84][256.84](audience cheering) It's going to take two minutes. I'm getting a text saying there's no audio for Verizon, is it?
We gotta do the cheer over, right? Gotta do the cheer over, right?
Start over again.
We're not going to cheer again.
Oh, come on.[278.22][278.22](audience laughing)
Maybe that's why they don't have any audio.
Yeah. I'd say we blew the speakers out.[283.62][283.62](pause)
Let me see what Merle has to say about the audio.[300.08][300.08](pause) Can we continue if you could hear us?[325.02][325.02](pause) Or if somebody has Comcast at home, maybe they could text me.[333.28][333.28](pause) The voice is choppy, lines running through the screen. I don't know, does he want us to continue and then shell it later?[362.81][362.81](pause) That's what happens when it's live, chief.
Just like life.
It's as live as in Memorex.[374.31][374.31](audience laughing)
There's no replay, but...
I swear, I thought that guy caught the ball at the end of the game. What did you hear that?
(inaudible).
No. All right, we're going to continue this meeting right now from, we understand Comcast is working, Verizon, it's a Verizon problem. It's not a borough issue right now that's in the room.[435.28][435.28](pause) All right, Bill, you want to go to podium first? We'll take care of some of your...
Good evening. Bill Pezzeta from Raising the Bar, and I'm accompanied tonight by Craig Whitaker, one of our board members. I want to...
How about his lovely wife?
And his lovely wife, Lynn, of course. And we have some other interested people in the audience who are just here for support. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I wasn't here for last month, and, you know, now that the holidays are over and the playoffs are over and everything else, it's time to roll up our sleeves and get to work again. You know, 2017 was a terrific year, both for the borough and for Raising the Bar. Your biggest accomplishment, of course, was the completion of the docks, which exceeded everyone's expectations about what a tremendous impact it would have for the town, and we're looking forward to the spring with that. And we're very pleased, of course, with winning the Small Business Revolution and the role we played in that, and also the partnership that we enjoy with the borough, and that's something we want to continue. So I have three announcements tonight and three requests. The first announcement is we're rolling out the new Visit Bristol Borough website. It's visitbristolborough, with the full word borough spelled out, visitbristolborough.com. It's patterned after the Visit Bucks County website, and its purpose is, and I want to stress it, its specific purpose is to attract people to come to the borough. So the kinds of things we're going to put on the website are the things that outsiders would be interested in coming to. So we're not going to put cookie sales on there or smaller things that are very relevant to the townspeople that we would put on our Facebook site. But we're going to promote the arts, the theater, the museum, our natural resources such as the river and the canal, and our historic buildings, and finally, our shops and our dining establishments. So we're very excited about it, and anyone who has anything to do with the major festivals or the organizations I just mentioned will have input into be able to post things on the website. We're going to troll it, and Raising the Bar is going to pay, it's going to pay the monthly fees as well as pay the people who put it together for us, but we're excited about that, so I want the listening public to know that and to share that information. It's visitbristolborough, full word, dot com. Any questions about that one? Check it out when you get a chance. And by the way, the opening, as soon as you click on it, the first thing you see is a 30-second video with Robert Hershevec and Amanda Brinkman at the riverfront touting how wonderful Bristol Borough is, and they end with the tagline that we've adopted, "Come for the history, stay for the fun." We thought it was a pretty cool line, and we're going to use it. So that's that, Visit Bristol Borough website. The second announcement, we're going to come to admit it, Craig is going to handle that. Second announcement I want to make is we're sponsoring a leadership breakfast this month, and you're all invited to it. You should have gotten an email to that effect, and I'll be sending a reminder, because I don't think anyone's been watching their emails since the Eagles made the playoffs or doing anything else. But what we did, we did this a couple of years ago, Ralph, you were there, if you remember, we're inviting the president of the Lions, the Rotary, the Elks, the Moose, BCHF, the Historic Society, the Celtic People, the Columbian, every leadership organization in town. We want to put all those people in the same room. So it's not open to everyone, we only have room for 50 people. It's going to be at the Center for the Arts. And the purpose is to roll out, you know, to talk about where we're going, what we're going to do in 2018, and to build that network. We think we won that Small Business Revolution because of the network we built last time. We were able to push a couple of buttons, and we're immediately reaching out to a broad group of people who can also reach out to their broad group of people. So we think it's a valuable thing to do. That's February 17th. It's a breakfast from 8:00 to 9:00, so we can get you all to work. It's $15 a person. Tickets are at Spice and the Center for the Arts. So that's that. Now we have three requests. The first one, we talked to the borough a little bit about it, in a preliminary sense, Raising the Bar has applied for and received a $10,000 grant from Visit Bucks County towards a matching grant toward the purchase of a tram. We want to purchase a six-to-eight passenger tram that will provide, you know, as the business district grows, parking becomes more premium. And, you know, we have that tremendous 300-spot parking lot, and it's very nice, but it's still a decent walk from the far end of that parking lot to the theater and to other parts of the commercial district. So what we're going to do is we would like to purchase this tram, we're going to match the grant with our own Raising the Bar funds, and it will run a route, you have it in your packet, the proposed route is in your packet, it's going to run, it's going to start, and this is all proposed, but it's going to start, let's visualize, start at the wharf, run down the parking lot, about two-thirds of the way through the parking lot where we'll have a spot where people can wait for the tram. And then it's going to circle back, go back to the wharf, come up the hill, turn right on the rack lift, left on the market, left on the pond, left on the mill, straight down mill, down to the wharf, and repeat that loop. So the whole loop takes four, if it wasn't stopping at all, the whole loop takes four and a half minutes. It's going to stop, obviously, or it would defeat the purpose. We think no one would ever have to wait or be on that thing longer than 10 minutes, and it'll be a way to funnel people to the theater, as I said, and other stops along the way. In addition to the service it would provide, we think it would be another cool thing that Bristol, a visual thing, so when people come to town and they look at this, they'll say, "That's pretty cool, you know, Bristol's got a tram, why can't we have a tram?" So that's what we want to do. We've kicked this around for months. And look, we have people in our board who are bankers, who are, you know, involved in business. We've kicked this around in every way possible. We know the pitfalls, and we know the positives. And what we propose to do is going to be fully insured, it'll name the borough as an additional insured, it's going to conform to all PennDOT requirements. I've talked to the chief a couple of times, we've worked on this a little bit, and Senator Thomas's office, we finally have the right information about what we can purchase and what we can't purchase and what is allowed on the roads. It'll also allow, in addition to that loop I talked about, on special occasions, we can go further. Like one year, they featured the canal as part of Historic Bristol Day. On that day, we can run shuttles to the canal. So we'll do things like that. We hope to run this thing with a combination of volunteer drivers and paid drivers. We'll raise the money, we're not going to ask you for any money. We'll raise the money for the drivers. The tram comes with a microphone, so we hope our driver will be a little bit of an ambassador in that, he'll be talking about, "On your left is this, and on your right is that," and maybe have some humor involved in it to make it fun. So what we're asking from you is your willingness to allow us to park this inside the borough fence at the maintenance garage, to protect it from vandals. And the second thing, it's an electric vehicle, so we're asking that we can plug it in overnight. We're also going to be applying for a grant with PICO to pay toward the electric, and if we do that, we'll give the money to you. But right now, that's where we are. So we're asking that you approve it, although, you know, according to PennDOT, if we wanted to buy one and drive around, we could. It's not that. What we need from the borough is the idea of designating some spots in the parking lot where we could stop, parking it inside the fence, and plugging it in at night. Questions about the tram? Now, once you, in concept, approve that, we'll still sit down and iron out any particular concerns you might have or suggestions, but I doubt we'll hear any that we haven't kicked around for a couple of months already. Questions?
Yeah, I saw the designated route, so if you don't mind, so you're going to go through the parking lot, you're going to stop, does somebody, like ring a bell or something, "I want to stop here," or they place it?
Yeah. We're not going to stop all over the place, we're going to have like two stops. So you shouldn't have to walk more than about a block to get to a place where you're going to be picked up. And then when we're back on Mill, we'll stop two or three times along Mill. We'll stop in front of the theater, probably stop on Market Street, all along the routes. About, I think I indicated maybe five stops. They're indicated on the diagram.
This will, we mostly run on Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays?
I think we're going to start with Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If it's in high demand, we'll extend it.
Yeah. I know when we go to St. Augustine, it's always fun just to park the car and catch a tram. It's a great idea.
Delray Beach, saw it last year, and it just looks like a fun thing. It adds to the mystique that there's something going on, you know, there's something fun going on.[988.23][988.23](pause) Anything else?
Would it have the capacity to go further on a regular basis, like the train station?
Here's what we kicked around. The answer is yes, as long as we're not on any road that exceeds 35 miles an hour, okay? We don't want that to be part of the loop, because nobody wants to get on a tram and then be on it for 20 minutes, you know? But if there was like something going on, and we wanted to say we can shuttle people from the train station to an event, absolutely, yes.
And, but does the equipment, is it capable of doing that on a regular basis?
Yeah. I mean, it's a, you know, it's a vehicle, but it's an electric vehicle. I mean, you talking about wearing terror or...
Yeah, you know, if it had to go to the train station, I don't know, the trains coming from every hour, say. So if we found that there was a need, I know in the past when we had Destination Bristol program, I would see people walking down Beaver Street looking around, wondering, you know, "What do I do now?"
Well, I mean, the answer is yes. My gut reaction is, I wouldn't want that to be part of the normal routine, because it takes away from what we originally intended. But absolutely, and if there was a special thing going on, we could even advertise, you know, "Take the 5 o'clock train, and we'll have a tram there waiting for you." But then again, if more than six people get off, then they got to wait till we come back, you know, so. But definitely, it, yeah. Anything else? Okay, so that's the tram proposal, so I don't know whether that requires council action, Ralph, or what, the part about plugging in and...
Not really, I mean... You want to use the Borough Yard, the manager can authorize that.
Okay. And the idea of, we want to find a couple existing light poles in the parking lot and affix something to them that has a little sign that says "Tram Stop," "Tram Pickup," with an explanation that, you know, when it's running, this is where you go.
I just think that, my opinion is, I think the least the borough is involved with this, the better, for liability reasons. I don't want to sit here and tell you where to stop, where to pick people up, and, you know, now we're being part of what's going on, so...
Right. But if we don't, I get that, and you are going to be fully insured, but if we don't designate a spot or two in the parking lot where they can be picked up...
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. That's the tram. The second thing is the concept and the topic of murals. I wrote a letter to the borough a year ago, making a mural proposal. It didn't go anywhere, but we were in the middle of so many other things, I think we were really jammed up. But the point is, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission puts out a document about small towns and main streets and what we ought to be doing and things like that, and they talk very favorably about murals. We set out three, four years ago to champion the arts, the arts not just in the theater, but not just the performing arts, but the visual arts. We build an art gallery, artists are coming to town, we have the artists of Bristol, there's a lot of art interest in town. We sponsored that Inside Out Art Program last year, and with that comes ideas that people want murals. And I understand the concerns about them, and I also understand the value of them. The concern is, how do you regulate them? How do you know whether the mural is going to look good or not? How do you approve them or not? And the answer is, let's develop a process. There are sample ordinances from other towns where they do that. I suggested that we create a thing called PARB, a Public Art Review Board, similar to HARB, where you put a team of people on, and when someone wants to make their proposal, they go before PARB, they make their proposal, and they're that buffer between the community and the council. And one of you guys has to be dealing with, you know, we're going to put art up, and, you know, should we approve a particular painting or what? So we could put in an ordinance, whatever it would be that would satisfy any borough concerns, but it would still allow us to have a process whereby artists can say, "This is what I want to do," and we'll do it. And then that dovetails a little bit, you know, Lou and I have talked a lot about signage, and we have to talk about revisiting our sign ordinances, but right now, we treat, apparently, we treat murals as signs. And I'm not sure that's the best way we could do it, maybe there's a better way. So what we like to do is have a couple people from our board sit down with the solicitor and the manager and talk about where we could go to institutionalize the concept of murals and a process where you can apply and get them.
I said to you before, when we discussed this, that I have a problem setting up a committee and changing zoning and whatever, you know, ordinances that we need to do. My only concern is that you put up a mural, and it gets vandalized or something happens, who's going to be responsible for repairing that mural or, you know, repainting something? Because then we're going to have murals all over town that have spray paint on them or they start deteriorating. Like when the Coca-Cola sign was on Market Street, prior to them, because they always had a leak, prior to them finally putting up a board to paint it on, it only lasts a couple of years to start peeling, and then the corner looks horrendous. So I think that you got to take into consideration, it's nice to put the mural up, but we don't want to drive around town and see things that are going to make the town look bad.
Right.
Not the mural itself, I'm talking about the maintenance...
Down the road.
...and the upkeep of this mural. That's my main concern with this project.
And I would suggest that whatever concerns you and the rest of the council have, we address and put in some kind of an ordinance, and see if we come up with something that works. And in terms of all over town, I think you can limit the number.
Well, I mean, you guys are running with it, so you make, I think you should make a proposal, submit it to the borough, let council look at it, our solicitor look at it, and then if you want a committee formed, then, you know, we'll form a committee, just like HARB, with different terms as they expire, you know, because, so we don't lock in a council that, you know, something changes, you just can't wipe out the board.
Right, absolutely. And we'll consult with other towns about how they do it, you know?
That's fine.
Yep. Okay, very good. The third one, you know, probably the most common, it hurts to hear it, and it's so unfair, but probably the most common criticism I hear about the town from townspeople is tattoo pollers. What are we, you know, when we built the docks, you see, what, Dr. Bosa didn't go get tattoos? It's just this pervasive view that tattoo pollers dominate the commercial district, and it's not good for the borough. At one point in this last year, not all at once, but coming and going, we had nine different tattoo pollers in town. I happen to think that tattoos are art. We have a couple in town that are outstanding, we have a couple that have won awards, and there's no problem whatsoever with their clientele and hanging out out front or any of that other thing. But that doesn't change the fact that a whole lot of people see other things as well, and I won't get too detailed about that. Anyway, again, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, Craig's going to talk to you briefly about some really good news about our use mix on Mill Street, but they talk about a healthy mix of uses. We looked into the idea of separating out certain kinds of personal services from our zoning ordinance to create a different category of personal services. What other towns have done, what I believe New Hope has done in particular, is say, as we know in zoning, you can't exclude any kind of use, and we don't want to exclude a use, but you can direct where it goes. And so what New Hope has done is said that tattoo pollers must be in a highway commercial area. So if we wanted to, we believe we could pass an ordinance saying, "We're going to separate that kind of use out from other personal services, like a barber shop, and designate, say, Bristol Commerce Park as a place where they can be." This does not affect the tattoo pollers currently in place. So if you're there and you want to stay in business, nobody's trying to hurt anybody's business or train. But what happens is, and we've had three close in the last couple of months, which presents an opportunity. So if we pass an ordinance like this, and the good news is, one of them is already being converted to another, someone is already signing a lease for another use that is not that. So I think we owe it to the public to say, "We're trying to address this." At the same time, we owe it to the tattoo pollers to do a good job, to say, "You have a right to be in business and to run a business." So we'd like to propose that the council consider separating, again, meeting with the solicitor to figure out what he feels is, you know, doable, separate out that particular kind of use from the personal services used in the zoning code and put it in a particular place. We can put it in the industrial zone, I assume. You can put it in the industrial zone, you can put it in the highway commercial, wherever you want to put it. And you can limit it in that way.[1586.01][1586.01](pause) I have shared this with people in the commercial district, including some tattoo poller owners, and they're in favor of it.
So why don't you rough draft something that you think, again, and submit it to solicitor and council, and let's see where it goes.
Okay. Okay. Anything on that? Bill, you comfortable with that process in terms of pursuing it that way?
Absolutely.
We'll see what comes of it. All right, I'd actually like to introduce Craig, just for a minute. He's done some work, along with Don, Raising the Bar work, with Don McCluskey and Mike Morone, about uses in the business district and a vacancy survey, and I think it has some very encouraging news. Craig?
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for, let me take 60 seconds here and hopefully go through this. Our economic committee on Raise the Bar, we wanted to try to focus on filling up the empty properties to keep, you know, keep our momentum going in town, so we decided the first step would be to try to catalog and survey what was available, what properties were empty, square footage, electrical connections, type of utilities. And in doing so, it was pretty amazing what we found out where we were and where we are today. The last time this was done was in 2014, the Delaware Valley Planning Commission, and they had put our vacancy rate on Mill Street at 26%, when that was three and a half, four years ago. And according to that report, the optimum or a goal for vacancy in a district like ours should be 8% or less. So clearly, 26 versus the 8, we were not in a good spot. When we started to put together our survey, it was, we found out, we walked the street, just put down vacant, not vacant, what buildings were in there, we realized that we are now down, at that time, down to 16%. So from 2014 to maybe six weeks ago, we had dropped 10%. We had approximately 10 stores that we thought would be available to rent. As of, actually, about an hour ago, with leases that we know have been signed and deals that are in place, people are starting on various projects, we're happy to say that our vacancy as of tonight will be 5%. So if you really kind of go through it, we're going to have five vacant buildings on Mill Street, and three of those five really can't be rented yet.
That's great.
Whatever everybody in the council and the people in town are doing, this is one way that we can really measure our results, and the results so far have seemed to be, you know, incredibly positive. The one thing I do want, I wanted to do earlier, I wanted to thank Mr. Dillon and Brittany for the one day we came over to try to put some information together. You need to know, Ralph, they were very helpful in helping us get started on putting this together. So we're at about 5%?
And Craig, the three, three of the...
Of the five, are really, we can't rent yet.
Are very rentable, they're very attractive properties, so we're confident that they're gonna be filled pretty soon.
Yeah, there's some really positive things that are taking place, and we're trying to get the right mix. The next, the problem we're gonna have, I know this sounds crazy, we're talking about vacancies, is we're not gonna have a lot of buildings left. And because of our mix of professionals, our mix of retail versus professional, and the type of retail is off. And that's gonna be a hard thing to change. You know, we have a lot of doctor's offices, a lot of professional offices, and that's probably not gonna change. And we're really fortunate, I think, with the great publicity the town has, is to be able to fill up these vacant buildings, because, you know, in today's Amazon economy, you have very few opportunities of what you're gonna get, or retail. I call it, you know, businesses that, you know, can't shop on Amazon. You know, be new antique place, some more food places are coming in. There's people that are interested in doing an old record store, an old comic store, and we just don't have the buildings right now. We have a perfect location, we're trying to get somebody to decide to rent their buildings, and that would really get us down to maybe 2% or 3%. So-
The idea is specialty retail, we're never gonna have a shoe store that's gonna be viable, or with specialty retailers?
Unique retails. One of the other things we're trying to do with these last remaining properties is just, we're gonna continue to meet with the owners, compile the data so we can share with real estate agents that they can distribute in the event that somebody's interested. And we're trying to create an ambassador program, where if a business is coming to town, we're gonna appoint somebody just to work with them, to walk them through town, introduce them to the leaders of town, and do whatever we can to help ensure their success and boost them. So, thank you for, any questions on any of that that's taking place?
Sounds great, good job, thank you.
The only thing I want to say is, I know you're, you like being in the background, you like being in the forefront, but I appreciate-
He didn't even come out tonight, so it-
I appreciate how hard and how dedicated you are to turning this town around.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Personally, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Go Eagles!
Okay.
That's Mr. Weston.
Mr. Weston and Mr. Brannigan.
How you doing, council? There's our proposal right there. We're asking for 1,200 square feet on the Mill Street side, for an outdoor patio for my partner and best friend's concept, Burger Garage. And underneath, you have a ADA compliant kitchen and bathroom. Our plans are all ready to go, we're all set up, we have our suppliers, we have our vendors, we have our contractors, and our contractor suppliers ready. We're just waiting for the borough to grant us and come up with a lease to acquire that property for outdoor eating. And listening to these two gentlemen talk about the property coming up and down Mill Street, I think this will tie everything in, because the further up you come, the Mill Street, there's really not much to do up that way, when everything's concentrated down at the bottom. King George, the new sports bar, the Cantina, everything's down near the wharf. I highly believe with this place up and running, completely functional, 100% functional, you'll get a loop like you do when you go to New Hope. You know, you park your car, you get out, you do the loop, you go around, so that'll bring comrades to fill up the rest of the property, that's how I feel about it.
The other issue is, we don't think the concept would work without the patio. I mean, the building is beautiful, I love the spot. Since we were kids, we've been trying to think of something to put there that would work good with the town. And I love the concept, we love the look of the building, but I think the whole thing just doesn't work without that outdoor patio there. There's nowhere for people to go. I mean, we have 2,000 square feet inside, but with the kitchen, I think the outside makes it the perfect look. It gives it the look, it's part of the park, you can walk through the trail of the park into the patio there, and I think it just makes that whole park look better, the lights, the atmosphere. I think it's just a perfect addition to that park and that building up there.
Yeah, I think it'll tie the whole town together. So like I said, we're just waiting for the blessing from the zoning and council, and your votes and everything, and hopefully everything goes our way, so we can get to work, because we're eager and ready to go.
You mentioned, where's there a sports bar?
I heard there's a sports bar coming to the, where the old Bristol House used to be. That's what I heard, that's word around the campfire.
All right. I got some questions for both of you, and these questions were, we addressed, that's when we were in executive session, and nobody wants to make a decision, because we're missing three people here, so it's not gonna be decided tonight. We're gonna have to discuss this again, and hopefully you could answer some of these questions, and give us a better feel for what's going on. So there's no parking on this property. There's no parking on the street, there's no parking on the sidewalk, there's no parking to the left of the building, so where do you want everybody to park?
The parking is on Mill Street, your first 400 block, no one ever parks there. And we're less than 400 feet away from the Mill Street parking. We're exactly 313 and a half feet away from the first parking spot. So we're under 400.
So you're not asking for parking? You're not gonna come back to this council and ask for parking to the left side of the building, where Blair's used to be?
No, sir.
You don't intend to park on the-
Sidewalk.
The other side of the street?
Nope.
Where the, you know, on Pond Street, or whatever you want to call it?
But no, we're-
So you're not, that's what we're trying to get at, so all you're interested is the one spot for seating?
Yup.
All right, so that's one question. I think you answered some of your intentions, what you want to do there.
When that patio is done, and we were putting another garage door in that side of the building, that side of the building is basically gonna be the front of the building, the entrance way. So the parking on Mill Street right there is actually in front of the building. It's only a few feet until you would get to the patio or the building. So actually, that is, it's gonna come off like that's the front of the building.
Are you gonna close off those entries that you-
No, no.
No, we're gonna leave it open.
But you're showing tables on the sidewalk?
Yeah, that's what I'm really concerned about.
That was, the guy who made the design kind of was coming up with that idea of putting them there. Plus, the size of the tables, and some of the sizes of everything in that rendering aren't right, because then tables look like they're taking up the whole sidewalk.
But there will, don't forget, the borough has to draw up an agreement. And there's gonna be a lot of restrictions in this agreement, and these are some of the things I'm touching on. There will be no tables on Pond Street, there will be no parking on Pond Street, there will be no parking to the left of the building. So these things would be, if this even takes place, we don't know yet.
Absolutely.
Ralph, you mean Old Thirteen, right?
Yeah.
Old Thirteen. While we're talking, it's still Pond Street up to the lake. Or it's Old Thirteen, I don't know.
It starts at the, at the point, Old Thirteen starts there, and ends at the end of Roman Halls.
Okay. So that's the sidewalk issue. And your intention for the grass area, is that going to be pavers, is it gonna be, remain grass? What's your intentions there?
We haven't quite decided yet. It's a toss-up between E.P. Henry, or a stamped blue slate concrete, like I did in front of my house on Lincoln Avenue.
We want the wall to match the brick of the building, so it looks like it's part of the building.
The wall will be bricked, it'll be topped with slate, it'll have lights, it'll have receptacles in it, it'll be all lit up, and we were kind of more towards the stamped concrete.
You understand that all these improvements would be at your expense?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But how the borough, I don't know, what's your intention for a lease? Like, how long of a lease you're looking for?
Whatever you're willing the leases to for.
Well, I'm hearing that they'd like to do year to year.
That's totally up to you, I was gonna ask for five. Usually takes two to three years for a restaurant to, to know if it's gonna be-
That's what I'm saying, so you're counting with like five-year lease?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what you think it's worth?
The property?
The lease.
Oh, the lease.
Yeah, square foot, whatever you want to say.
Well, it's 12, it's actually 1,170, we just rounded up to 12. I mean, I guess that would be something you, council, and zoning would come up with, and then maybe we can-
Well, zoning, that has nothing to do with it.
No?
I guess this is what the-
Well, we heard the Indian leases were really cheap, like a dollar or something like that.
Yeah, well, that'll never happen.
A dollar a year for 99 years, no?
We didn't want to add too much to our monthly expenses.
I mean, it will be very well maintained, as you know, my father's always taken care of that building, and we'll be taking care of it too, it'll always be nice and tip-top shape, it'll always be cleaned.
All right. So we would have to, I mean, I think you should give us an idea on dollar amount, what you think it's worth, or we could have somebody go out there. I think that we already, there was a couple of numbers thrown around tonight, I'm not gonna throw them out publicly, what everybody thinks it may be worth, if this even happens. So you're not looking for a license, you're definitely looking for a lease. And you understand the difference. A license is, it's borough property, it remains that way. Anybody, if there's tables out there, somebody wants to sit there, they can. You're looking for more of a private-type thing, where it's a lease.
Yes, absolutely.
You're responsible for all improvements, insurance, everything that goes with it. You understand that there is no alcoholic beverages allowed to be served on any borough property? So any event that takes place in the borough, like down at the wharf or anywhere, there's no alcohol allowed on borough property.
Served on, did you say?
Served on, it's illegal to-
How about consuming it? If I, if I, if we sold the beer on the inside, they can't go out and sit?
No.
Really? What if we leased that property, is that, or property that they couldn't walk out there with a beer?
That's, I think that's a major concern of-
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't plan on selling liquor.
No.
We plan on selling-
What's your intentions for alcohol?
One beer distributor.
We're hearing all kind of different-
One beer distributor. Everything is locally sustained. We're going with Machamani Brewery, they're gonna subcontract for us, we're gonna sell their beer, but we're only limited to selling their beer and their product only. So we'll only be selling bottles of their made beer, and that's it.
So your intention is to have alcohol on premises?
Yes, eventually. Not right from the beginning, but eventually, we'd like to go to burger and beer. That's kind of what we're going towards.
The idea of the patio is to have some fire pits out there, some gas heaters, and you go out there and eat your burger, and you can look at the town, look at Mill Street, have a beer and eat your burger.
All right. I mean, I don't know if that's something that is in our ordinance, I don't even know how we handle that.
They definitely won't be going off of the patio, that's what you mean?
No, we're-
We're not looking for a bar crowd, we're not gonna be open till 2:00 a.m., we can guarantee that.
No, we're not-
This is a restaurant pub, you know, this isn't, this isn't-
We would just, I mean, it's something that would need to be looked at. I remember when they did the Kansas City barbecue down at the river, they did the cook-off, and they had Sepicore sponsored it, and they had a tent, and we found out you can't do that on borough property, so that's why that stopped. Even like the doo-wop and all that, we can't have beer or anything sold on borough property.
Originally, from the beginning, we didn't want any alcohol at all.
Right, that's why I'm getting that-
Now, more people have been saying, it'd be nice if you had, you know, just beer, and that's when we thought about getting a sponsorship from a local brewery, something simple and easy.
Well, it's something that needs to be discussed. And you know, no matter if this council approves this or not, you need to go through all the process, which is HARB, if you have any zoning issues, building permits, everything has to be followed accordingly to-
Absolutely.
All borough codes and regulations.
I know the guy who works here, he's guiding me.
He's guiding you? Okay. Did I touch on everything, or am I missing something? All right, so I think the only way, how do we proceed with this? Have them come in?
I think we have enough information, I think council can discuss this in executive session.
Monday night, next Monday?
Decide if they want to pursue it, then they could authorize me to draft the lease.
Okay, so what we'll do next week, we'll discuss this, because we should have a full council in executive session, and the solicitor will draft up a lease for you guys to look at and go through, and if you're unhappy with some things, you can come back and say-
Yeah, it'll be negotiable, right?
Yeah, everything's negotiable, but, you know.
Someone gonna go look at the area out there?
Yep.
We got it, we got it marked.
I did some marking, some excavating.
I have a question, Ken, hold on. The wall, because it looks like it's different on the drawings. Where is the wall, is it just across the back of this property, or is-
No, it's across the back and along the side.
And how high?
Where, according to the swells, so water has a flow, no less than 24, no higher than 30. So no, no higher than probably-
It's like, okay.
Yeah, a knee wall.
Right.
It'll be, it'll be bricked, the matching building, blue slate on top, there'll be a light every three feet, and a receptacle every foot and a half. We're thinking about, so we don't have to shovel, we're thinking about even heating it.
USB ports, gas lines in it, flex lines.
It's gonna be all-
We want the gas in it, so there's not, you know, propane moving through the patio. Run some gas lines in there.
But it's across the back, and it's gonna be the same height?
Yeah.
That one on the back looks like it's higher, and that one rendered-
That's it, it's not supposed to be-
That's, yeah, that's the angle of the picture, but it's 30 inches, at the most, 30 inches, 30-
It's a knee wall, and that's-
30 by 16. It'll be a 14-inch wall with a 16-inch piece of slate.
And how, and I haven't been out there, how far are you away from the crossing?
What, the corner on the back?
The backside of the crossing, where they got the Arboretis and everything.
I would say from the corner of the proposed area right there, to the stone trail, about 18, 20 feet from that trail right there, you're talking about that trail?
And people that walk from behind the garage can still walk around that?
Yes.
Yeah, the wall's only halfway, it's only halfway up the building, the wall, it doesn't go all the way to the back. So from where the garage yours is gonna be open-
If you can see it on the little one at the bottom down here, the one it's written on, you can see exactly, that's exactly where it's at. It doesn't go, it doesn't, the property that we're asking for, it doesn't, it's only like a section of it. It's not the whole side of the garage. It's 30 feet off the garage and 43 feet to the sidewalk. It's 1,170 square feet.
Do we have a preliminary plot plan, just to, you know, for Monday night? Just to put things in perspective regarding the question that you just asked, you know, the-
Right.
I have, we need it.
We have a plot plan.
Yeah, we got the plot plan.
You deliver something to the borough for, to put in our packets?
Yeah, sure, we'll put a packet together, it's not a problem at all.
Where the Welcome Friends sign is?
What about it?
Plot plan? You know where the Welcome Friends sign is?
Yes.
Is it on your plot plan?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's, I-
See how far that is?
Yeah, I got a, Tracy Miller did it.
It doesn't really impose in the park as, that much.
I didn't think it did.
Yeah, it's close over there. I mean, all the trees are still the trees in between where the patio would be, and the sign and everything.
Yeah, there's plenty, we got a, what do you call that?
Earth sign.
Google Earth? I mean, we're, from what Tracy Miller gave us, we're plenty.
We'll bring that Monday with you too.
Yeah, we'll have a packet for you, we'll have it all done for you, all rendered for you.
Matter of fact, if you could get it over here by Thursday, if that's possible, we can have it in our packets. They usually deliver our packets on Friday, so when we come in on Monday-
If you can get it sooner, the manager would like to get it out to everybody.
We're gonna have it tomorrow. We'll have it tomorrow afternoon.
Louis and Tony are talking about is, they want to see dimensions, not just Google Earth. We can do that-
I got, I got the dimensions too. I got, I got it all on the phone. Actually, Tracy took care of all that for us.
Any other questions? You want to say anything, or?
We're just eager to get the word, to get started.
We want this to be a big part of Bristol, talking about murals. Inside, we want to do 1681 giant mirror on the side of the building. We want pictures like that, we want it to be-
It's gonna be dedicated to the town, and like, I'm sure plenty's been in St. Anne's Club.
My dad put 40 years into this town, into the apartments and-
My father's owned that building since 1980.
So we want to put in it.
So we, it's gonna be a homage to the town. It's gonna, like, when you walk into St. Anne's Club, and you see all the mural on there, we're gonna do all murals of all old garages and all, it's gonna have a very contemporary, modern, mechanical feel to it, but very family-oriented.
Not chintzy.
It's, we got the plan.
I mean, it sounds, no, it sounds really nice, I mean, I just, you know, we're setting precedent here with this, you know, of other people coming to ask for grounds, so-
Right.
We want to make sure that, you know, we do everything the way it's supposed to be done, and I, council-
I'm gonna tell you my biggest concern with this whole project, I probably, you know, the only thing I'm worried-
I probably, you know, the only thing I'm worried about...
Too much? Well, we're not...
I'm just telling you, because of, of the traffic that we have there, it's bad enough people have a hard time getting to Mill Street, crossing there. You know how it is when you're coming up the hill, and I just feel like this is going to be a big safety issue.
But that would be part of our agreement.
I just want them to know...
You mean the tables, right?
Tables being there.
Yeah.
Our designer did that, it was, we didn't actually say put them there.
I'm just telling you, that's my concern.
All right.
Like I said, the side is, is going to be the front of the building.
That's the building.
You're going to enter from coming onto the patio and in the door on the side, and that's where you're going to order, and that's how you're going to walk through. So, that front is kind of just, it makes it look like it's a garage, like the burger garage, the concept. It's not necessarily going to be where everyone goes in. That door could be shut a lot, you know, when it gets colder, but the side...
Is the apron coming out?
No. That's a lot of, that's a lot of...
It's a lot of cement.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
No, I know, but I'm just thinking for the future, that's true.
Well, yeah, we were thinking at the time to put the planter boxes, because they could be up to 14 inches off the road, so we wanted to do the long planter boxes, nice.
Same planter boxes.
You know what I mean? So, people can walk and have the sense of protection right there.
Yeah, that's what it is, protection.
Yeah.
Narrow planter boxes along the front of that building, and not tables there, so...
Yeah, that, that was just in the rendering from the designer. We're ready.
We're trying to understand this lease part. I think the lease may have to be with you and Joe personally, and with your dad as the property owner.
No problem, he's, he's, he's 100% on board.
No, I know, I'm just saying, so there's got, someone, you're going to have to have three people maybe on this lease, so... As long as your dad understands that.
It's not a problem at all.
All right. All right, any other questions? All right, so you know how we're proceeding? Monday night, we're going to discuss this again. It may become an agenda item probably Monday night, to vote on to proceed and have the solicitor draw up some kind of a lease with you guys to review. And then from there, it's back and forth with, the more things you want to negotiate with, the longer it's going to take.
The plot plan tomorrow.
We don't, we don't meet every, every week, so next meeting is going to be in March. So, hopefully you guys can get everything worked out as soon as possible.
We hope so too, we, we want to get to work soon. So, tomorrow, we'll just bring you everything you need for the next process, for the next, the next step?
All you're bringing us tomorrow is the measurements and the plot plan of the higher area.
Okay.
You guys can see where the sign is.
And I'm going to discuss with the other three council members, get their opinion, and see how they want to proceed, maybe put a dollar amount on it, unless you guys want to put a dollar amount on something when you hand that stuff in tomorrow. You guys could talk about it tonight.
All right.
See what you think it's worth, and then, yeah, we proceed from there. We just wanted to get some things cleared up tonight, about parking issues and some other things.
Yeah, we're depending on Mill Street parking lot.
We like the tram, too.
And the tram, that's the greatest, that's, that's a great idea.
All right, that's it, guys.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Participation, anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? That ends our participation. All right. As some of you guys may be aware, may not be aware, we had some damage to our docks down at the, down at the Wharf. Kurt and Amanda's here this evening, just give me a minute and... Kurt and Amanda's here this evening to discuss what happened with the ice and how we're proceeding with this. So, you guys want to fill them in, or you want me to? Go ahead, Amanda, you're on top of this.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably most of you have either seen the docks at this point or seen pictures of it. I do have copies of pictures, if anyone hasn't seen it, they can take a look at it also. But it is, we were notified that both down river sides of the floating docks have been damaged. And I think, you know, we've all seen pictures or seen the river this winter. We have had an exceptional winter. So, it does, at this point, appear to be damaged due to the amount of ice that was on the river this winter. They were almost completely encapsulated in ice, I think at one point a couple of weeks ago. So, we have been in contact with the manufacturer, the contractor, and the design engineer. All three of them have been looking into the situation. We've had the manufacturer down to the docks to take a look at it. He doesn't feel that they can be repaired, but they are, again, they're modular sections, so they can, they've agreed to replace just the end section of each of the docks. So, we're, we're very happy and, you know, thankful that they've been willing to accept that, and they've been willing to work with us. However, we do want to make sure this doesn't happen again, obviously, in the future. Yes, this was a harsh winter, but this could obviously happen again. So, we want them and we want the design engineer to look into other options, whether that means possibly redesigning something or installing something additional on the end of the docks to prevent this from happening again. The manufacturer kind of brought up maybe the idea of having something sacrificial installed at the end of each dock. This way, you're not replacing a whole section, you're not actually replacing the docks if this does happen again. You're just, you know, replacing that sacrificial piece, whatever it may be, wood, metal, something. Along with that, he also found while he was down there, the wells that the piles sit in, he noticed there's some cracking within those wells also. He does feel at this point that that's something that can be patched, and they do plan to patch that. But again, we'd like the design engineer to kind of weigh in on that, make sure everyone's on board with the repairs. And he's also kind of recommending, again, a preventative measure, maybe something as far as an ice mover or something to prevent ice buildup within those wells where the piles sit, again, for the future. Because he does feel that that cracking is due to most likely ice buildup within those sections in the wells. So, we are, we're, you know, still actively working with the manufacturer and the engineer. The contractor, Simpson and Brown, has been down here as well, taking a look at it. So, I think, you know, they've been very responsive. It's just, you know, we need, they'll need a little bit of time to kind of work through what the ultimate resolution is.
But what I would just like to say is that we're holding a lot of, I'm not allowed to say how much, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
We're holding over a quarter million dollars still on this docks, because there's a percentage that you hold back for one year. The contractor and the manufacturer's been super responsive to this whole issue. They agreed to replace the two docks that were damaged at no cost to the borough. They also, Kurt and Amanda's pursuing an engineer to have all the docks checked and underneath checked, once the weather permits for us to get under there to make sure there's no structural damage or anything like that. When we designed these docks, the, the main concern with this council was that they would withstand the ice in the wintertime. And I know we had one of the harshest winters that we had in I don't know how many years, but did these things fail, did they not fail? We don't know, but I think, who's it, Bellingham, that designed, built the docks, the actual piers, been very gracious, they're concerned, that they want to make sure this doesn't happen again. And I think Kurt, like he said, if you bought a, a car from Toyota or whoever and the bumper fell off, they don't want to just fix the bumper, they want to find out why it fell off and how they can redesign it so it doesn't happen again. So, I think that we're dealing with some really reliable companies here, and I think it's going to get resolved. In the meantime, you know, we just have to put up with this, but, you know, as far as, everybody right away wants to know who's paying for what. I mean, our concern is to make sure these docks are safe and that they're open come April for the people to start using, visiting the borough. Our other concern is, does anyone have any pictures of this ice? Because it was like, really, they were encapsulated, like you said, and for some reason, you know, I, I told Jim, you know, we should take a picture, not thinking anything would happen. I don't think we really have great pictures, but if anybody at home was down there and took pictures of this dock and the ice buildup and everything around them, if you can get them to the borough, I think it'll only help us. If there's an issue down the road that we have to address, we have some kind of documentation on this. So, if a borough resident or anybody knows anybody that has a picture, please, if you can, get it to the borough.
Ralph, I, I saw something, somebody has a drone that flew down the river during that period. I think it's, I don't know, is it affiliated with the Center for the Arts, I think, aerial?
They have them drone shots, right, Kurt?
Yeah, we do have those, they're actually up on YouTube, which is where we saw it, and the design engineer was using that as well, but we don't have anything from really, again, it's kind of an aerial shot, so it is a little bit tough to see what's going on, but, you know, he's, he's definitely using those, those videos.
Don't forget, that ice cutter was coming down the river and cutting that ice in pieces that were enormous. I mean, that, you know, once that current starts moving, that ice is coming down. I mean, it's moving at a pretty good pace. But I don't think that, me, I'm not an engineer, I don't think that caused the problem. I think the problem happened when the dock lifted, and there was so much ice around it, it couldn't move, and it just racked it, or it'd start pushing it, tried to push it apart. And that's just my opinion. There was so much ice underneath these docks and formed around them that I think they just got locked in, and then when the tide went up and down, it just popped that end off.
Right, and along with that, Hudson, the design engineer, they're looking through all of the calculations and looking through the situation now to make sure, again, that the fabrication was correct too, that there wasn't an issue in addition, I guess, to the ice as well. So, there may be still a couple of factors that have played into it.
Right.
But I will say that in talking with Bellingham, the manufacturer, they are, you know, we're confident they're one of the most, you know, the best dock fabricators out there. And he has said, even up in New England, they've had so many calls about damage. I think there's even some docks along the river that have been damaged. The, these docks are much more substantial really than anything else on the river, so you, it does just, you know, show you how difficult this winter already has been. But it's good that we're experiencing it now, rather than 10 years down the road when maybe the manufacturer's not in the picture any longer, you know, they're still involved. So, it's, it's, if it's going to happen, this is the time.
And this isn't the first docks they ever built. I mean, they do...
Absolutely not, yeah.
They're one of the, they're probably one of the biggest around. They do refineries, they do places all over. So, like Kurt said earlier, they're trying to not only fix the problem, they're trying to rectify the problem, to find out what failed and how do we fix this so it doesn't happen again. So, that's the good, when I heard that, I even feel a lot better about it.
Yeah, and we'll keep you updated then.
Anybody else have any questions?
Amanda, can you ask them? There are systems they use on the Jersey Shore now, because even saltwater over the past 10 or 15 years has been freezing in these marinas, and it's caused a lot of damage. And some of them use bubble systems where when the temperature, water temperature drops to a certain degree, it's basically an air compressor, and it's pumping bubbles to keep the water moving. And if the water's moving, the ice won't form there.
Yeah.
Because the way that one separated, that had to be a heave, just like ground would heave when it's frozen. That wasn't ice coming down the, you know, the river hitting, you know, I don't think it hit in the one spot, it was actually separated.
Yeah.
So, I think if we can prevent the ice buildup, because this year, that, that ice was frozen across the river until those cutters came in, and, you know, I mean, it wasn't thick, but it was still...
Right.
In years, I, I've seen it, I've seen it happen a few times.
Bellingham actually, they've suggested exactly what you said. It's an aerator, an ice mover, to prevent that ice buildup, so it's just a matter of...
Oh, I'm glad they...
Yeah, so...
No, because I think it's a, it's a cheap fix, long-term. Because like you say, after we get out of our coldback period, you know, we're out on our own then, so...
Yeah.
I think we got to look for any way to mitigate that damage in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on these docks?
No.
So, at least if you're questioned on the street and everybody that could answer this understands where we are and what's going on. Anything else, Amanda, on that?
That's all, thank you, Amanda.
The other thing is, while you're standing here, I'd like council to put on the agenda for next Monday is to authorize them to go out to bid on widening that road down at Basin Street when you make that turn.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make that an agenda item to go out and try to get an idea on what it would cost to widen that street. Okay?
On that issue, Ralph, the fellow there that, I forget his name right now, that's, that's spending all the money at the old Bristol House, he, he was concerned about that, did he, did he have any more input on that? Why, you're talking about why, right there where the restaurant's going to be?
Yeah.
When you go down?
Okay, I just, I just wanted, he was, he was...
Well, I think our concern is right now that with all the things that are happening down there, it's getting too congested. They, I mean, we talked about a drop-off lane where you could drop people off on the rivers, on the dock side, you know, where right now it's coming up the hill. Maybe that gets striped where it's a drop-off zone, and then you move your two lanes over, going towards the, the building. So, exactly how much we need and everything, they're still working on. But I know we're going to, we're going into March's meeting, so I think the sooner we get this on the agenda and authorize you guys a lease to go out to bid, to bring some kind of bid back to council, the better it is. Any other questions on that?
Do we have a design on it?
They did a rough...
I know we had some preliminary designs.
Preliminary design?
Yeah, we did a preliminary design, we're still...
Do we have a design that we can go out to bid with?
We'd have to tweak it a bit and, and kind of modify it, but we could, you know, we could come up with something.
I guess that'll be in our packet before next meeting? I'll direct it to you. Make sure it's in our packet before the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll run something by Mr. Dillon, and, and we can see what to include for next month.
Amanda, how about the ADA ramps with the county status?
Yes, so, the, the borough was awarded a CDBG Community Development Block grant through the county. I believe we got that, the contract came through over between Christmas and New Year. So, we had asked, we applied for a grant to upgrade some of our intersections for ADA curb ramps. We were awarded $121,000, so that's roughly, we could get down about 24 curb ramps with that. So, we're figuring on about seven intersections. So, we did select intersections that are kind of closer to Snyder Girardi, that are more geared towards, you know, the students walk into school. So, a couple intersections along Beaver and Buckley, and then also on Otter Street. So, that's something, I believe it's executed now, and we could probably move ahead with designing those.
All right, any questions on that? All right, Amanda, thank you. All right, Herbie?
A couple things. One, we're starting to replace some of the carbon monoxide alarms that we have, that we had gotten with the grant. We're also in the process of setting up the safety committee for the workers' comp insurance. Next week, the fire prevention grant, the next one opens up, and we're looking at possible projects that we can submit for that. That's a federal grant program again. And the last thing, we have gotten a grant for, again, this year for the auto injectors, for the, for Narcan, for the opioid overdoses. It's approximately $175,000 retail value on these things, and we have enough of them that we're going to share what we have with the police department to supplement their, the auto injectors that the officers are using on the drug overdoses. That's it.
Any questions for Herbie? Chief?
Well, we survived both the playoffs and the victory. We had two requests...
Physically?
Huh?
Physically?
Yeah. We had two requests... We had two requests from the township for assistance out of five points that we both responded to, so that went well. We had some large crowds in town, but overall behavior was fantastic with our people, so we appreciate that. One of the things we got involved with, again, and I talked about this before, the Municipal Instant Response Team called MIR, we're now a part of, they came into town and assisted us once prior to me being here. We're now a participant in that, we have an officer assigned to that, so we'll be assisted, I'm sure, this Thursday now in Philly. That's 100% reimbursable through them, so that doesn't even cost us anything on that one, so. Other than that, cold has kept us a little bit slow. It seems to be some domestic violence stuff that we have to unfortunately deal with, but other than that, it's been.
Any questions for the chief?
I'm just going to apologize, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no.
And because you hired a working chief, I'm going to excuse myself. I have an investigation I'm helping out with, I got to do some interviews with, so.
Before you leave, and I don't know, Merle might know the answer, just in preparation for Thursday, I know the Borough had kind of built a bed for their Bobcat. When the Pope came in to Philly, they modified the Bobcat just in case there was an extreme emergency, something where they couldn't get into an area.
In the Borough, you're saying?
Our Borough was, Merle, do you remember when they modified the Bobcat with the bed on the back for when the Pope was coming into town?
Uh.
In case they had a handle, something?
Yeah, they put the rails on the back, and we had the straps and all, and we were going to use it for, you know, like, a temporary ambulance to get out to people that were stuck, and you couldn't get a vehicle there, and then they had, you know, the stowed basket to put on and all. They did that, our Borough did.
No, I knew they did it, but is that something that we should be, make available for Thursday, just in case? I mean, it may not draw the same crowd as the Pope, it may, I don't know, but.
Oh, I think it will.
Might draw a different crowd.
Well, yeah, we'll check with Scott and Merle and see if they.
Just to make you aware of it, that we have this.
We had concerns more than anything else, I guess, about the train station, people going, you know, parking. We still have a quarter of the parking lot, the Sepulveda empty, was never getting filled up from the overflow from Levittown Station. We also got 135 spots between the ballpark parking lot and Garden Street, and then down where they go, Garden Center is most of it, I tell you. We should be good, I think.
We're planning to gear up for that, we'll probably put some extra officers on, especially for, even though it's SEPTA's venue. The SEPTA chief had contacted us prior to the Super Bowl, and basically told us, he apologizes because he was trying to put an action plan together, however, the Eagles management wouldn't talk to them because of superstitions about a parade or anything like that. So I'm sure in the next day or two, they'll be in touch with us and deciding what stops are picked up and drop-offs, and we'll address that.
Chief, next time you got sun, just let us know, go first.
No, it's okay, no, I've been going back and forth with the sergeant, it's just worked out perfect, so thank you.
No reason to sit here.
Missed the Eagles fight song?
Blue. Just so that you know, the Bobcats are available anytime you need it. You just have to call them, and wherever they are, they will come. We have used it up at the canal when they had the cameras to get people out of there, and now we're still in the process of trying to get them to get the spar out from lumbermen's down to the canal. Once they take the tracks and the ties out, that would give us a hard surface to run. Right now, we got to go all the way up to the canal path and try to come in off of the left side here to get into the.
I just want to make the chief aware that we did have that, just in case, and he can make SEPTA aware of it, in case there's a need for specialized, something specialized like that, you know.
All right, Tony, do you have anything?
Yes. Can we take a look at maybe repaving Pond Street? I know it's 15 years old, and it's, you start going up around Washington Street, Lafayette Street, and all the way through there. It's pretty rough, it's 15 years old, our guys have been maintaining it very well with sealing it and everything, but that, Mill Street parking lot is really bad. I don't know if we have the money.
The what, parking lot?
Mill Street parking lot? That's bad as well. If we can take a look at maybe getting some bids on that to get that redone, or is that?
Well, we're working on trying.
Trying to get what redone, I didn't.
The roadway.
We're trying to work on.
Pond Street, Mill Street parking lot?
Trying to work on some grant money. We had a proposal, like 10 million, to do the parking lot.
10 million? Oh, okay.
How old are our roads with the road program, Ralph?
I think everything's good, I mean.
What year are we in?
On which road?
Well, we did everything.
And we did the road program?
Everything we did the last 15 years.
Who did we do them?
Were you year 12, 13?
I think some of them were 2000.
2000, 2001, 2002.
12, right?
They gotta be, they gotta, what's that, Tony?
George referenced Pond Street, it's 15 years old.
Well, let me tell you about Pond Street, just to give you some history on it. Pond Street's a cement road, so the block, there's, every so often, there's a joint for expansion and contraction on the cement.
Okay.
So they're diced side to side, and it's down the middle. So no matter what you do with Pond Street, you're always going to get cracks at them joints, unless you take the cement out and you put down a base, you know, stone ballast, and then binder, and then top coat of asphalt, which would be astronomical. So, you know, you try to saw cut it, you see these roads now that are all cement, and what they do, after they blacktop, they saw cut every joint, and then they fill it with this expansion and contraction material. You see they shoot it in with a truck, puts like hydraulic stuff in there. I don't think you're ever going to correct that cracking and stuff like that, because there's just too much movement underneath. Kurt, oh, you're an engineer.
You said it well.
Well, so, you know, to redo it, if you're looking more for appearance, I mean, when we redid Pond Street, they even grinded some of the, when they.
Milled it.
When they milled it, they even milled some of the cement, because the curb line, if you look on Jefferson and some of the streets, there's no curb, it's like maybe an inch, inch and a half. To do that right, you should be down six inches, but you're ripping out cement. So how much can you keep building up? You could go right over it to make it easier. I mean, you guys want to go out and look at it and give us your opinion on, you know, maybe we take a section at a time and rip out the cement and do it right. I don't know what it would cost.
Very expensive.
Very, that's what.
I think I was Route 15 up in 263 up in Warwick, they did the same, they had the same problem, and.
I got it podium, Kurt.
He said it right. The only way to get around it, they've tried to take out the joints two feet, you know, from the, from the expansion joint that's there, and try to minimize that movement, but it's, that's, that was, I think, a failed effort. I've seen elsewhere around the state, what they're doing now is they're removing everything, all the way down the stone. And a lot of ways, because you got to keep the grades, you got to haul out all that concrete, and it's very, very, very expensive. So, you know, the best solutions are preventive maintenance, but it doesn't look good when you have cracked seals everywhere in the roadway. It almost looks like it's not maintained, but in fact, that's best maintenance. But otherwise, it's just keep milling off and keep paving it, but you don't get a very long.
But even if you do a new road, and I think we used that petro mat under some of it, just to see if it would last, you know, experiment in different ways, it's, it's going to look good for six months or a year, maybe, and soon as that cement underneath starts moving, it's going to crack.
Yeah, I haven't seen them use much of that membrane recently.
Right. They even tried a couple. We saw cut out a couple spots that were bad, but Pond Street is just, and I think Jefferson may be cement, too, I'm not sure.
Part of Farragut.
Part of Farragut, we know Farragut.
No, not Jefferson. Jefferson didn't have any basis.
2005 or so, 2005, Farragut.
At least 13, I think, 13 to 15 years that road was done. So I know, you know, again, you get a price for milling overlay, but it's not going to hold up the way we want it. Like our side streets, a lot of them look great, and you're going to get potholes. I mean, that's just human nature. But I think the road program is, you know, our guys stay on top of it, they do what they can do. We're building up a fund in that, and you can look in your budget, if we have to do something, we have the money to do it. But the roads were so bad at one point, we had no choice but to redo all the roads, because if you picked and choose, we'd still be doing a road every year or two, and the other roads would have been so bad that you wouldn't, they would have been undrivable.
We did a present, future analysis in doing them with the favorable bond markets, and I think it was '09 when they were done. You know, that was the right decision to do them, because like you said, 82% of the roads were paved.
Right.
It wasn't like we needed to do 12 roads.
Right.
So they've held up really well. I think the Borough is one of the finest maintenance crews that we've seen, keeping on top of it, and I know the Borough's done a really good job with road opening permits, to try to preserve the integrity of the road and doing that infrared patching and all. So they're holding up real well, we think.
All right, what else?
Grass median strip on Route 13, where the flowers are on the ends, are we going to, are they annuals, or?
We still never accept, as far as I know.
Okay.
We have never accepted that yet from PennDOT, because it's not what we planned on doing.
Okay.
So if they, as far as we're concerned, we're not accepting it unless it's done the right way, they can maintain it.
They're maintaining it, okay.
Yeah, we're not doing anything.
There's a lot of trash, there's a car bumper on the one by Beaver Street, so I didn't know if we were maintaining that or not.
No, we haven't cut the grass or did anything there yet. It may come down, but we never do anything there.
And how about the, on Route 13, at the jug handle going over the Commerce, we had, we had an issue with people back there, and there's the trash, well, the trash is visible now. Is that our, is that our property, or, down by where Niagara Pools is?
Where the homeless people live?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can see it now, I've been thinking, if we can get a chance, if that's our property, we can clean it up now before the vegetation starts to grow in another couple of months.
Is there people still living there?
I haven't seen any, but there's a ton of trash back there, and you can see it from the highway. And just the storm drain at Mill and Ratcliffe in front of the Cantina, that's all. Anytime it rains, the water doesn't go down, so it's all backed up there. We just have that cleaned out. That's all I have, thank you.
Louis?
Yeah, I have somewhat of a public service announcement, and this affects a lot of our citizens here in Bristol, because a lot of us are over 65. SEPTA has a key program, and for those of you who aren't aware, you can travel on the trains, SEPTA trains, for a dollar, or you can buy a book of 10 tickets for 80, 85 cents apiece. But you need to have a identification, SEPTA identification card. So what they've, and with this card, you get, you can ride the subway and buses free. There's an electronic strip in it, and you just tap it on when you get into the bus or subway. But to get this card, you have two options. You can go into Philadelphia at 1234 Market Street, and it's in between the Lowe's Hotel and Macy's. If you look downstairs, you'll see, you can see in the basement level, there's a trolley car, part of a trolley car is one of their exhibits. But you can go there, you register, and they give you a number like at the deli, and then you have to wait till your number's called. And the day my wife and I went, it was, they told us it was a two to three hour wait, well, it was a little over three and a half hours, but I just want, but they do give you the card. When you go back in, it's a photo process, similar to going to PennDOT. But afterwards, I called John Galloway's office, because it did say on the computer that you could, that the state reps were also doing this. And when I talked to the people at John's office, they have the photo machine there, and you can go and get your picture taken. However, they don't print out the card, and the girl said some of the pictures were taken back at his senior expo in October, and they still haven't received their card. So we went to Philly, and they give you the card right there after a four-hour wait. So I just wanted people to be aware that this program's out there, and as, as it goes on, I think that wait time will cut down, because the card's good for four years. So you have to have photo ID, like your driver's license, and you can print out the form on the computer ahead of time, so that you can fill in all the blanks. So it's, it's something that you're going to have to have if you're going to go and use the train or the subway. Right now, they're still letting you use your Pennsylvania driver's license. But I've asked, and Matt's going to put this on the website and on the TV, the form that explains it, and explains the process, so. That's all I have for today.
Thanks, man. Yes, thank you, Ralph. I'd like to start off, first of all, by thanking the good people of the North Ward for coming out and voting in November. I do appreciate your support. I'm honored to be your councilperson for the next four years. So if you have any issues, or, you know, I live right there on Corshin Street. If I'm not home, I do lead an active lifestyle. Just leave a note there, and I'll make sure your concerns are handled properly. Thank you again for coming out. And also, if I may, I have a, I have a letter from my brother, who, Mike Gerard, he's a school teacher there for 40 years at the high school, and he is now the president of the Bristol Alumni Athletic Association, BAA. If I may read it. General membership meeting will be Thursday, February 8th, at 7 o'clock at the Borough Pub, 1800 Farragut Avenue. Dear members, our winter general membership will be held at the Borough Pub, one of our sponsors of our golf outing. The meeting will be held on the second floor. The beginning of our get-together will be social, a chance for us to revive old acquaintances, to meet new friends, and tell some stories, some of which will be true. We would also like to treat all active members to a drink in the spirit of camaraderie. So it's $10, and you get a drink. You missed out, we had one over Dad's Distillery on Canal Street, and for 10 bucks, you got three or four shots. That was, that was pretty good. If you're a lapsed member or a new member, no problem, we can sign you up on the spot for 2018. The next very brief part of the meeting will be devoted to BAA business. We'll use that time to inform the membership of past activities and our future plans, which will include a Trenton Thunder game on May 8th, and our annual Golf Classic September 17th. We're proud to have provided more than $2,000 in academic grants and donations to school and community organizations just since September, with a total of about $122,000 since 2004. After association business, Heather Petrogi and Maria Doherty, two highly respected and longtime teachers at the high school, will fill us in on the advanced via individual determination Avid program, a new initiative involving academic middle ninth graders. Avid's goal is to become a school-wide systematic approach to improve student achievement and college career readiness. I hope to see you on February 8th. As always, bring a guest, a spouse, a friend, a former teammate, or neighbor. The more involved we are, the more the kids benefit. A legacy of achievement, a commitment to the future. Signed, Mike Gerard, President. This is a total, non-political, fun evening. They hit different spots in town. We were at the Center for the Arts one evening, we were at the library, the museum, Dad's Distillery, which was good, and now this Thursday, we'll be at the Borough Pub. It's for the kids. They, like I said, they raised well over $100,000 for these programs. It's, it's a fun night. So if anybody can make it, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Anything else, Dave?
No, that's it.
Eddie?
No.
Joe?
Yeah, just a couple things, Ralph. We're starting to look at year-end reports with both, both chiefs. I just want to, just real quick. I just want to just, real quick, just give you some statistics. Like with the fire department, last year, the total calls were 614 calls. And it's the first year in the last 10 years that 51% of those calls were emergency medical calls, which is more than the fire calls in town. I think that's, you know, it tells a lot about what's going on in the town. Our emergency medical calls have just been gone up every year, along with assisting, you know, the squad. Herbie mentioned about the federal grants. Got $175,000, equivalent $175,000 for Narcan that they're using for, you know, when they respond to the drug challenges that we have. And then also outfitting the police department. This all saves the taxpayers quite a bit of money. I just think people should know that our fire chief is doing an excellent job, not only in managing the fire department, but also going out and getting these various grants such as the CO alarms. They're looking at people who had got these alarms 10 years ago. They keep such good records. And where they can, they'll be following up with these people to make sure that they come in for the new CO alarms. Also looking at, I attended the fire board meeting, there was a discussion about working on an SOP for Grundy Towers and also too, reminding everybody, the firemen in town, that the third Wednesday of the month is for training. For police calls, just starting to look at the whole police management. Last year, I don't think anybody's ever reported this number out. Our police department responded to 19,416 calls in Bristol Borough. 19,416 calls. It's like 16, a little over 1,600 calls a month. So, you know, we're only 1.5 square miles and we've got 10,000 people here, but there's quite a bit of police response. And that could cover the whole gamut of, you know, every call out there. But I just think that's something that we should be aware of. Also too, I want to thank everybody for helping on Super Bowl caring on Super Bowl Sunday as a continuation of our Martin Luther King Day of Service. We went out and we picked up almost 2,500 pounds of food was donated by the good residents of Bristol Borough for our various food pantries in town. I want to thank the Calvary Baptist Church and especially Matt and Michelle McAlack, who coordinate this program for the advisory and oversight committee, for the Bristol Learning Centers, our former police chief, Arnie Porter, who was my co-chair on this, and volunteers, majority who were really not from Bristol Borough, who helped us in getting this done. We might have missed a couple houses. I've seen some things on Facebook today. If we get more volunteers, you know, we can reduce the number of houses that we miss and also increase, you know, maybe being able to do the whole borough, because we just don't have enough volunteers to do the whole borough when we do this on MLK Day. And I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, you're, Billy, whatever.
Yeah, just for council's meeting, we'd like to authorize advertisement for the new wireless ordinance, also authorize advertisement for the ordinance for restricted parking on Wood Street, and finally authorize contract for Jefferson Avenue and Otter Street field maintenance with Leo Klonsky. That was in your packet.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions on that? So the contract is now going to be with Leo, not the son?
Correct.
Correct, everybody understands that?
Mm-hmm.
No, Jim?
No.
Billy, you have anything?
I really don't have anything, so.
With that, I get a motion to adjourn?
No move.
By Louis, second by Betty.